Yeah, we're gonna say that it's 5:30. According to our clock, it is. We've got... So you're ready, Lindley?
Yeah.
Okay. So the roll call, Larry?
Here.
Ross?
Here.
Well.
Here.
Scott?
Here.
This meeting was duly published in the Wakefield Republican and posted in three locations. The opening laws are behind you, if you're interested in looking at those later. First item of business is action on the minutes of the January 19th council retreat. Those are in your... You guys have read those?
Yeah.
Yeah. Bachelor, retreat, January 19th.
Second.
And, well, Ross?
Aye.
Well.
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
We have the same thing, action on the minutes from the February 12th meeting.
Motion to approve February meeting minutes. It's like 12.
Val?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
And Ross?
Aye.
And then we've got action on the treasures report from February meeting. Can I have a chance to look at those?
And what are questions I had to answer?
Any other questions?
Nope.
I move the... Approve the treasury...
Second.
...from February 12th.
And you seconded, Val, huh? Scott?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Val?
Aye.
And the next item of business is exciting, is to award the bid for the Sixth Street paving project. And Matt's here to talk about that.
Yep, so we got two bids yesterday, Gil Construction and Steve Harris. Gil was the low bid, so we do recommend going with them, and we have worked with them on a couple of projects, and they do good work also. So, we do recommend going with them, and they were pretty close to what our estimate was, so...
Both bids were pretty close to the... Just a little bit over.
Yep, just a little bit over, so... Yep, so we recommend approving Gil, I guess, for the... That's a little bit of the Sixth Street project.
Which is one block.
Yep.
Higher than I expected.
Could have been gutters and storm drain.
Yeah, and they're out too, I suppose.
And they're gonna... If I understood it correct, are they gonna make sure that those storm sewers are all connected?
Yeah, so it's a storm drain everything to make sure everything works. I know down in the future, Winter Street's kind of what we're gonna tie into. So, it's just kind of making sure everything gets to there, and then once you get to Winter Street, you can make sure all that connects in properly. But, yep, no, it's making sure everything's draining towards Winter Street.
And I don't know if we have to do more with maintaining those storm sewer inlets or not, but when the surveyor person was there in winter, that one by Rex Hansen's there was... You couldn't even see it, because it was just full of leaves and sticks and things, and I don't know why we don't have that all cleaned out, but Jim, you got an answer for that?
It is today. Cleaned it out this week.
So they're gonna try to...
We're gonna mow out.
They're gonna try to keep them all clean?
That's the plan.
Because it seems like in my memory that we used to keep them really clean all the time. It used to be a monthly service that was just done. We've kind of fallen away from that. Any questions about the Sixth Street paving?
As far as this bid goes, are there any values? I mean, Harris is doing South Main, right? Any value just keeping him in town? I mean, they're not really close on their bids.
Yeah, I mean, Gil's doing it for a cheaper price, so I don't know why you wouldn't go with the cheaper one.
And Gil's doing South Main, right?
And ours is doing South Main. So we got three different...
Yeah, three different parts.
We assume that we would get a lower rate with one of those people that's already here, but...
And Gil might have just saw New York Street was... Harris was in town, so they might have... I mean, just knowing that other people are in town, they might have tightened up their prices too, so... But, yeah, nope. Gil does good work too, so just prevent... So they have a little bit, that's...
And Rod explained that, that being later in the year, a lot of them have filled up their... Most their summer with work. So that might be why it's a little bit higher, too.
Is there an estimate of when?
So the completion date is August 1st substantial, and then August 15th have everything done, we'll see when that happens.
So what do you think? We got... Larry, you and Val were the two that have been working hard on paving streets and alleys. What do you think?
So the complete date is then when we start?
From what I know, they said they wanted to start around May time, May or June timeframe, but until we have a pre-con, it's hard to for sure know when. I know the other two projects are gonna start once the weather turns, they're wanting to start. This one, we haven't got to the pre-con, we got a schedule and everything, but we'll have that pre-con here in the next month, and then we'll have a better idea on schedule.
So we could have all three here at once, eh?
Yeah, we could.
How long does it take to do a block like that? How many weeks?
Probably two to three weeks. Probably takes about a week to tear everything up, a week to do the utilities, and a week to pay it. So, three weeks, if they're really efficient, that might be a little sooner than that, but kind of give them a week for each day.
Anything else for Matt? Larry, you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve. Bid for the Sixth Street paving project, Gil for $127,763.82, is that right?
Okay, Ross?
Aye.
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Aye.
And we've got a lot of information on the filter plant.
Yep.
For each council member.
Fun little book there, that's easy reading for you guys.
We'll read it in the lectures.
Sorry, lecture notes for you guys.
Talk about it next meeting, maybe.
Yeah, so Craig will be coming next meeting to kind of explain it all and probably give a summary for it, but it's... We didn't want to just give it to you and then present, and then you kind of look it over and then have questions afterwards. We wanted to give you guys a chance to kind of look it over if anything really stuck out, but...
One question that we had was the location of the building, and Ross had brought up earlier about there's some ground on there that's possibly available that we did... Maybe if we need an expansion as far as more room for this building. Did you at one time think there was some ground down there behind the...
They're gonna give you three options in that group.
Yeah, we've got that ground that we already own, but she said there's a little... That we could move.
So who knows me?
Oh, it was you?
Yeah. So a lot of Salmon Well, behind their...
It was you, okay.
Yep, behind their shed. Have we ever had any discussion with them, Jim, about possibly being interested in some...
Not with Salmon.
Now, it wouldn't be Salmon's anymore. But when we were down there, we thought it might be pretty tight to get it into those three locations. That's what I'm talking about. If we're gonna build a couple million dollar building, maybe we need to acquire and see if there's a little bit of ground that we could even acquire... Get for that building, if that's the case.
So there's some ground down there by Christians, in East of their Kim building. And then if that's not available, what, Kim and Salma's got some ground over there, the old cornfield?
Jason Salma owns that.
Two sites, the three sites we looked at, one was on the... It seemed to me that it was on the north side of the road back to the dump aisle for leaves and branches, and the other one were on the south side. And if we want to put a building on the south side, it might be nice to see if we could acquire a little bit of that ground, so you could make it look nice. That's just what I was thinking, but... They'll recommend... You know, they'll have to look into it.
Yeah, so if you guys read through this and have any... I mean, if you come across something that looks funky, like I said, Craig will be here at the next meeting. Otherwise, feel free to give Rod or Jim or me a call, and we'll try to get you an answer.
And Jim said this one's similar to the one in Hickman?
Yep, I think so.
So it might be wise for us, if we get a chance, if anybody's... Anyone's down that area, to check that one out. You had a picture of it, I believe. Did you guys get that?
Yeah.
And it also might be good... I think you were planning to get... Try to get Mike?
Mike and John went down last Friday.
They looked at it?
Mm-hmm.
Good. All right. So that probably is... You don't have anything else that you really want to tell us right now, is it?
No, I... Yeah, all other than knowing it got sent to you guys, I don't know much about... I haven't read through it yet either, so I probably have just the same question as you right now, so...
We really enjoyed your speaker at your banquet.
I didn't realize he was a lion until he started talking, and I didn't know he was a northeast Nebraska boy.
Yes, he's a lion, lion. Thanks, Matt, appreciate it.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good one, guys.
Thanks, Matt. I'm in an interlocal agreement with the Lower Elkhorn Natural Resource District, and this is huge for us, because they're helping us pay for the repairs, actually the movement... The moving of our dike, you know, the levee's gonna be moved. And Michael Foods gave us some property, which we're very appreciative of. But this will help us a lot as far as meeting budgets and feeling a lot better about where we go from here. A couple of the Lower Elkhorn Natural Resource District members are... If we look at it, one of them is Joel Hansen from Wayne, right? Joel's been really supportive, and Roger Gusterson has been really good. Now Roger, the dike actually caused his ground to flood almost the whole area there that he farmed, so he had a lot of stuff to pick up. So he didn't really... He personally doesn't really benefit from the dike, because what it actually does, it brings the water downstream, and it floods his bottom land there. So it might be nice if we see Roger, send him a note and say thanks for supporting us, and Joel the same way. Is there anyone else in the area, Jim?
No, there are... I think west there, Fork County, so you go clear over to Pearson, down to Norfolk, and clear up into... Close to the Coaches. So that's a pretty big area. I think there's nine board members, so didn't really know, but two or three of them.
And Jim and Megan worked on this, looking for some funding. We knew there would be some funding coming somewhere, but didn't expect that that would pay for half of it, so really pretty excited about that. And hopefully everyone's excited about it. And thanks for your work here, Megan and Jim, for sure. We have to go ahead and approve then the interlocal agreement with the Lower Elkhorn Natural Resource District. Lee, you want to...
We have a resolution.
If you introduce it and move to pass?
Yes. And I just authorize it.
You want me to read this? This is all I have to read?
Yeah.
Okay. This is Resolution 5, 2020, a resolution of the mayor and city council authorizing the city of Wakefield to enter into an interlocal cooperation agreement with the Lower Elkhorn Natural Resources District, L E N R D, for repair of the Wakefield levee damaged by the floods of March 2019. Authorizing the mayor to sign all documents and agreements necessary to effectuate said interlocal cooperation agreement and to establish an effective date. And that would be today's date, right?
Well, it'll be when they sign.
When they sign?
On the effective date.
Okay.
So somebody's introduced and move to pass it.
Have we got anyone to introduce it?
Yeah, we have an introduced Resolution 5-2020, our interlocal agreement with Lower Elkhorn.
Give me a second. And I will read the amount of money that this is, $389,776.50, which is one half of the estimate previously paid by the city of Wakefield. Val?
Aye.
Scott?
Yeah. Aye. Larry and Ross.
Okay. You'd like to sign it now?
Yeah.
Okay, the next item of business is the passage ordinance for 2020 with CRA membership. Do you want to go over that, Lee? It's actually for today's date on this, or not?
Yeah. This is the same ordinance that it was... Well, it wasn't introduced, but it was on the agenda last month. So I think nothing's been changed since then. What it does is allow the mayor... Right now, we have five members. This is, you can have up to seven. So it's up to the mayor to designate whether he wants five or seven. Right now, we have one vacancy that he needs to fill for a five-year term. If it would... If you pass this, he can increase the membership to seven, which case he'd have two others to appoint. I think in that case, you could appoint one for three and one for four, so you could have the staggered appointments going ahead. So if you adopt this, basically, and it also... There's no language to it that just brings the CRA ordinance language up to date with the present law. Things have changed since we... Some of the language has changed a little bit. But the effect of it is to make it flexible, so you can have five or seven members on the CRA.
And some of that came about because we had a trouble getting a quorum at meetings. And we've had a trouble getting a quorum at some other committee meetings here lately. But we could... I would like to increase it to seven members. I know Sam has been gone for... Sam is continuing on, because we haven't appointed that position, but Sam has been gone. Is he back yet? Sam and Val, are they back now?
I don't know if they are for sure.
Someone did get your sign today.
Yeah, they are.
And so, yeah. But you have been able to get your quorum then?
I don't know, I wasn't here the last meeting either.
Oh, you were going to.
Yeah, we didn't have one last week.
Okay.
Now, what's it gonna... If you put it to seven, what's it gonna take to be a quorum? Still?
Four.
Good. Good.
And that's... Before, we had five, but the quorum was four.
Right. And I've talked to quite a few people, but there's a lot of them that are a little bit afraid of the workload with the... With that particular committee. Couple of them thought they were too old, they thought that they had served, and so anyway, that's where we're at. And we do have three people that we can add to that. I wanted to have a... Val Bart is on there. Before that, we didn't have any representation for a short period of time from the council, and Val is up for reelection, so I talked to Ross about being on the committee. I don't know if he's deciding he wants to be in the committee or not, but if he doesn't, I think we'll have an opening again. If Mr. B. Jott gets an administrative position here, he would be then have that... He would be exiting, leaving Wakefield, so... And then there's terms that come up every year. And Ross had expressed an interest in that committee, but he's too busy now, I know he are, so I'm not gonna... And with what we're going through here soon, you're probably gonna be really busy, so we'll just maybe wait until...
Talk about it later.
You'd rather wait?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, that's... But that's... Pardon me? For now, you want to wait?
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to hear that, right? So that's where we're at.
So if any... It hasn't been introduced yet, so someone would need to introduce it if someone wants to. And then I... If you're gonna have the three readings or not, that would be the next one.
Right, and we left at five or seven, based on the fact that we think... I think seven will be better. And we might find out in a year or two that seven isn't better, and in two years, the new mayor can cut it back to five, if they think that works more efficiently. So we didn't change it to seven, we changed it to where the mayor can have five or seven people on that committee. And my hopes was to get more representation on the council. And I didn't realize how hard it would be to get members to agree to be on that board. But it's a pretty important board in our community. So any discussion? And would someone like... We have to introduce and move to pass?
You gotta introduce, and then there's three readings unless somebody wants to move to waive the three.
I think the three... I think we should at least, my opinion only, you can discuss this. I think it keeps us from getting in a big hurry if we go at least with two readings. So we could have the first reading tonight on these two, and then do... Next month, do a second reading, and if we're happy with how it looks, then we could go to a... Waive the third reading, if that makes sense. You could... That way, you would have at least 30 days to change your mind and talk about it, think about it. Of course, that means if we do that, we can't appoint anybody tonight either, can we?
You can appoint the one. When it's vacant, cut out the man.
So we need someone to introduce it.
I'll introduce ordinance 4-2020, CRA membership, and move to its first reading.
Somebody just read it.
An ordinance of the city of Wakefield to amend the number of members of the community redevelopment authority, to amend the number of members required to constitute a quorum, to provide for record-keeping requirements, to provide for authority to hire and fix compensation, to provide for the repeal of ordinances in conflict herewith, and to prescribe the time with which this ordinance shall be in full force and effect. And that's the ordinance. And also, they're having... Is that March... When is your meeting that you're having that person come out and talk about the...
We had it.
You already had it?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, well, if you recall, I gave a personal invitation to this group at the last meeting.
I thought it was March 15th.
No, it was like February 22nd, I think.
I missed it, but Val, you read it.
Now, that was just a comment after this, if I might. I thought that was a great meeting. What that did was it basically threw out a lot of information about TIF and all the workings and how different communities work or use it. Our plan is to now have kind of a follow-up retreat again, possibly not on a Saturday, possibly instead of at our next meeting, possibly a late afternoon thing, and try and get... To try and focus more on what we want to try and look at here for Wakefield. So, you know, just a comment toward the readings and the three readings and all that. If you want to have seven board members, my suggestion would be to get them appointed and get going, because Val, I think, will agree with this. It takes a while to kind of learn what all this TIF stuff and this whole working... You know, there's not a huge amount of work with the committee. The hugest part is just kind of learning the process and kind of learning what it is and some of that kind of stuff. So, just thoughts.
There's some... Some of the language has been changed on other things, other than just... I mean, there's quite a bit of change, right?
It's still everything that's underlying.
Yeah. Is new.
And that has to do with the terms of office and how people are appointed and how long they serve, to keep it consistent, you know? A decent change instead of really nearly.
Well, and the other thing about CRA, we've had CRA in Wakefield for 20 years.
It hasn't been active for a long time.
Nothing has been done, because we haven't done anything, but with the tiffing of the Walbon project, and now there's money available, now work has to be done. That money just can't sit there. It's gonna accumulate, but something that's useful has to be done with that money. And that's the reason we need to real... And I agree, I think seven would be a good number on the board. I wouldn't argue that. But, you know, we keep... You know, and we're already... You know, we don't have much more than 10 years left of that TIF already. You know, we talk about 15 years, and we think that's an eternity. That's like that, you know? It goes quickly, so...
And I... Did that... Like with Sam being gone, with only having five members, does that throw you into a bind as far as trying to get a quorum?
It does. Well, it's not only that, it's... You know, people are... You know, and maybe we have new needs, and sometimes that... For most people, that works. But sometimes it doesn't.
If I'm seven, you'd...
And the rest of us are kind of old, and we're not very dependable, you know?
Well, Larry said he could serve, but he can't make a new meeting, so we may have to look at changing the meeting at some point in time, but...
I don't know.
I don't know. I just think... Council, you can decide what you want to do with the three readings, but I just think every time we've tried to hurry through something, we usually get in trouble with... In one way or the other, and it comes back to...
But a retreat, if I can ask you, if we have a retreat, we could invite other members.
Well, it's a public meeting, anybody can come.
Yeah, uh-huh.
You know, you can...
Interested parties.
Right, right.
That's a good idea.
It's a... It's a public meeting. Retreats are just like a meeting like this, and so anybody can come.
Well, I think to attend any meeting, Val, just to say, let's sit here and listen and see what I would like to do here and participate in this, or if it's gonna take a little bit more than they thought.
Well, I think the other ordinance is also gonna be the same way, where we're gonna have to wait 30 days, and hopefully in 30 days, we could approve it. Or if we have a... If we have to have a special meeting for another purpose, we could have those on that agenda also, which could speed the process up a little bit. But we've got... You've introduced it, right, Larry?
I've introduced it and have first reading.
Is there a second to that?
We don't need a second.
Oh, there's a second?
Our first reading.
Introduced it for the first reading.
Okay, now I gotta read it. Now I've read it, right?
Yeah.
Don't want me to read it again?
No. So the question is now, is it just lay on the table till next meeting, or does someone want to waive the readings?
Oh, we need a motion to waive the three readings.
If you want to pass it tonight.
I'd like to open it up to your discussion.
I think it's good to leave it on the table for 30 days.
You know, as long as maybe some of the people you're thinking about filling positions are asked to come, or we make it known that it's what we're talking about.
You can still get the wheels turning even if you don't waive it yet.
Catch your next one? So that'll only have to... There's no motion to...
Right.
Okay. Have you got that one also?
Yes.
I've got a copy or someplace. Where's that from?
Coronavirus, huh?
Blood on the ordinance. And this is an ordinance of the city of Wakefield, Nebraska, to amend the authority of the park board commissioners to include supervision of employees of the municipality doing work in or for the municipal park, to provide for the repeal of ordinances in conflict herewith, and prescribe the time which this ordinance shall be in full force and effect. Now, we have discussion?
Yeah. This is how it was drafted, same as it was last month. But Val, I remember we talked about changing it from the municipal park to municipal pool.
Right.
So I didn't make any change, I just note that we discussed that. And then a little earlier, Ross and Scotty were talking about, should it just be over the, you know, the pool manager?
The problem I have, I've lived here too long. We didn't have a pool when we were young, and we went over and took... Cheryl, you can attest, this was swimming lessons in Wayne, right? Did you go to that?
Actually, I was closer to Laurel by two miles.
Oh, you went to Laurel? But we had parents driving us, a couple, three carloads to go to Wayne every day for Red Cross swimming lessons. And then the pool was built in 1954, 1955, the first pool. And V H R Hansen was pretty active in the community, and he was in his 70s or... At that time, it seemed to me to be. And then he ran the pool up until, I think, almost until his death. But he always hired it and ran the pool. And then we had a person that took care of the park grounds, remember Nels Munson, when he mowed the whole park? Took about a month to get through the park, and he'd go again. He had a push mower with a mozzol. And then we went on, and we had a caretaker of the park about... There were about three different ones. Net Park was the last one that was served for a long time. And then David Selly did it for a year. Then I think Lowell wanted to make a change, because he was having a hard time getting someone to fill that position, so he just put... Had the city workers start mowing it. And that's how we got a change. Otherwise, it was a three-member park board, and my dad was in charge of the athletic fields, basically, and Morse Carlson was in charge of the picnic grounds and the playgrounds, and V H R Hansen was in charge of the pool. And it seemed to work pretty well at that time. When I became the mayor, I thought we'd have a 12-member park board, and it was just... It was too many people. Trial and error, we had too big of a board. So we thought we would go with this board. And prior to that, we had had a... If you were in the park board, we had some trouble with the pool as far as finding adults to run the pool. And we had some issues each year for the next few years, and Jim, I think, would probably say that we didn't have enough maturity as far as the manager and occasion. And so we thought that we... We did get some people, like former pool people, that kind of went up there and checked on things, and would help with some suggestions. And then we decided to have a pool committee of Teresa Soderberg, who's EMT in town that answers a lot of calls, and two former managers, Mary Brudigam and Joe Lem... and two former managers, Mary Brudigam and Joe Lemkohl. And I think, my personal thought is they would do a great job of running the pool. They're interested in it, they're willing to put the time into it, and they helped a lot last year. They got our guards cleared as far as CPR training. When there was an emergency during the Midsummer Classic, they got that done overnight. And they also did a couple of drills up there. And they were responsible for getting that done, where the rescue personnel were there and the, they were actually with three life savings. So, that's the purpose. But here again, we've got a lot of stuff to look at, so I'd say take the three readings and, or do, do first reading tonight and then have the second reading later on.
This is the, this is the right one. It's the same, I think, Eddie.
So I've read this already, you don't have to read it?
The language is a little different, this talks about.
Yeah.
I guess I have a few questions. So where does, you've got your, your park board composed of three people, right? So they're in charge of the pool, right? Because there's no real clear chain of command here, I don't think, anyway.
No, I understand what you're saying. I, I know for years, I mean, like thirty years, those three guys basically ran the park. But there was no city manager.
And I think, I think that's okay as long as you have three really good people. If you don't, it becomes a problem. And then my other question, I guess, is where, obviously the city has to be involved here somehow. So is it, is it the job of the park board to say, we need to come mow now or it's time to change the goalpost?
No, that part, that part remains the same under the guidance of the city office, the mowing.
Okay, cleaning the pool, going up and cleaning the pool, I know the city was involved in that.
They get the pool ready and they.
So they're still going to do all that?
They still will do all that. And that would be under Jim's command and Mike Mogus be the.
Okay.
Facilitate it.
I just, I just am worried we're going to have too many talking heads, you know what I mean? When you assign a board, obviously they, they give the manager direction and the manager takes care of the issues. It's, you know, it's like Mr. Farrip, if you had school board members walking around the school, say, do this, do that.
And they're great.
They're helping me here.
What would it work?
But I mean, you have to have a clear chain of command. And I don't know if I see that completely here. We've got a pool board, we've got a park board, we've got the city, and I don't know where everybody stands in all this. That, that's all I'm saying, I guess I, it doesn't really lay that out.
There is no pool board. You gotta get that out of your.
It's a pool, it's, it's a park board.
Pool committee.
And, and that is a creation of the park board. Internally, the board can.
The park board.
Create its own committees. And that's evidently what it's done here.
But they, there's a pool committee.
Just like there's a committee for the football field, there's a committee in the park board. Because like Mike Clay last year was, and Bob Luberstan mowed the football field and Mike Clay was the football coach and Jeff Kegel was a school board member. So those three guys were assigned to the football, baseball field, but with the focus, making sure that we had communication with the school board. But that twelve-member committee was unworkable, it just, it had hard, I mean, it just, according to Scott, I, and, and Ross and others, they just thought it was too many people. And then we had Heidi Brown was on the softball with, and Mike Mogus was going to be on the softball, Little League field, because they're down there a lot. And then Scott Hanson was going to be on that and Van Donner. So those people will still be there and willing to work on committees, but they won't be on the park board per se as far as making the decisions. The park board will make the decisions for the pool and for the baseball field and for those playground areas, for the basketball court and volleyball court. And, but hopefully we can get some people to work with them.
Okay. I'm not against the idea, I just want to make sure it doesn't break down in two or three years because there's no clarity here.
Right. The park board would be over those, all those committees. And if the park board decided that they needed a change in committees, then they could just say, well, we're just, we're going to just ban that committee.
The pool committee is just there for things.
They're there to, they're there to try to help run an efficient pool, a safe pool.
Okay, but they're not actually running the pool.
Pool manager will run the pool, but they'll, in my opinion, being on the park board previously, that we had a lot of problems. When you have a high school girl being the manager and she will tell, I mean, if you want to really talk to that manager, she will tell you that she had girls that wouldn't do what she asked them to do. And there's been that, it's been going on for a while. And I just thought, this way we could get a manager. And the talk is for the manager to be possibly a manager and not a guard. And have a, so we get a more mature person to be the manager.
So the pool committee would give direction to the manager?
They will hire the manager, they will give directions to the manager. And if the park board thinks they're overstepping their bounds, the park board can say, hey, we can make some changes here, but.
So the, the, the pool committee would be responsible for checking on certification and up-to-date, whatever the state says there has to be, that kind of stuff with the manager?
Which they, they got us out of a bind last year with the CPR because Teresa Soderberg's son, he overtrained our guards whose CPR had, according to the state person in charge, had expired. And they also came in and ran some safety drills and some rescue drills, which I think is important. I don't know how you can manage the pool and, and really be the, know what's going on down there when you're in the city office. And I feel like you've got three people that have experience of being the managers, that were successful managers. Why wouldn't you utilize their knowledge and, and they want to serve the community in that way?
So the pool committee is actually managing, not managing, but.
They're hiring the, the.
Pool manager.
Hiring the manager and they're helping her hire the guards that she'll have on her staff.
And the park board is.
Above them.
Above them.
And above them is the city council and the city administrator before the city council and the council.
Okay. There's no mention of a pool committee in this. And then the other thing we need to.
I didn't write, I didn't write this, but I was, I looked at it when Teresa was finished.
They should function as a committee, not three individuals who are just going to walk around and manage the pool.
No, and, you know, I was invited to two of the meetings last year. And this is what made me think that we needed to take a change in direction. Because one of the things they asked was that there's, there is a protocol at the pool as far as keeping things clean. And there is a lifeguard that is, each day is charged making sure that the restrooms are clean at the end of the day. There's a charge list. And then there's a, the same thing, the next day, there's a person in charge of making, checking the showers and the restrooms and making sure everything is clean and proper before you open. The manager knew we were having a meeting. We went to the meeting and before the meeting, we checked the girls' bathroom when it was dirty and the stools were not flushed. There hadn't been a swimmer since the night before. And that, that's not how we want to run our pool, I don't think.
Right, but we had, we had a chance, we had the city council and then Jim and then the pool manager. Where it really broke down is we didn't give Jim guidance. If we felt this way, we should have probably relayed that to Jim and said, let's get it fixed, let's get this taken care of. And that never happened. I'm not against making a change, I'm not saying we can't do it better if we change it. I'm just saying there was a breakdown on our end, really.
Well, but we had issues with the pool for several years. And I can bring people that had kids swimming, I can bring my wife and she said she would come before the council and explain her experience.
I'm not arguing that, I saw the same things, I saw the same things you did.
But her experience was that she came up with our twin granddaughters who were eight. They wanted to go down the slide and the slide was closed because one of the guards had complained about heat exhaustion. And she was sitting in the guardhouse, she didn't go because of the heat exhaustion. She was still getting paid, she sits in the guardhouse and the slide is closed. Janelle simply asked if they could open the slide. And she said, no, because this guard is having problems with heat exhaustion. So then Janelle suggested, well, maybe you could go up there and she could stay here in the guardhouse and, and count the people as they traipse into the place. And then she slammed her computer down and I guess I could do that, but I have to go move my car first because she parked right next to the pool entrance when she'd been asked by the pool committee to park on the opposite side of the street, which would be thirty steps away. And if that's how you're treating the public, if that's how you want to run the pool, that's what we're getting and it isn't a one-time deal either, guys.
So if we're going to move forward with this, do we want to have somewhere in here that the pool committee is actually?
Under the auspices of the park board?
Right.
I didn't write it, Teresa looked for guidance on it, I think we just were, we wanted to bring it to you guys, let's change it.
If, if you want the pool, if you want the, the park board to have committees, I don't know that they, they aren't, they don't have the authority to establish the committees, but there's no requirement for them to have committees. If you want that to be a requirement, that they have committees, then we should put it in the ordinance. But it's a three-member park board. They can have their own committees or they don't have to.
That's up to them.
It is up to them, yeah. And it, it's not for the mayor to appoint or the city council to appoint those committee members. It's the park board that should appoint their own committees. And if you want them to have to appoint committees, we'll put it in the ordinance. If they, if you want to leave it up to them, we don't need to.
Okay, so, are you going to be in the park board?
Yeah.
How do you want to do it?
I, I'd like something to be writing on there, I guess. Just because my problem is, I don't want to, I, I'm, I'm down at the park all the time, but I don't want to be getting phone calls for the pool. Because I don't want to be managing the pool, I guess. I don't want to be in charge of that. Maybe that's, maybe I shouldn't be on the board then if I don't, if I'm not willing to, but I, I, I don't know. I'm willing to be on the board, I just, I just want it somewhere in writing that not, not all three board members are in charge of the pool. Maybe, you know, have it.
I'm sure the old ordinance wasn't written that those guys had their areas of interest, but my dad worked on the athletic fields. Morris Carlson worked on the picnic grounds and the playground area. And V H R Hanson ran the pool. And they were the three park board members for probably thirty or forty years, I don't know how long it was, but it was a long time. Until they aged out of it.
But like you, I mean, but like they said, if we do establish that, I mean, the park board can establish that committee, so I think that would. But then we need to establish, I mean, and this is all part of park board stuff too, but once we get to it, they need to establish a chain of command, so the complaints aren't coming to the city, so they're not fielding all those calls then or in so forth. If they're having the, the pool committee in charge of it, you know what I mean? But that's all part board stuff, then if that's the way we want to go with it.
So who is on the park board besides you?
We have three people to appoint. And I was, at some point in time before, hopefully before the course of the coronavirus, it might never open. Teresa Soderberg was going to be the park board member in charge of the pool. Scott Hanson was going to be the park board member in charge of the area down by the T, the T-ball field and the softball, little league field, pony field. And Mike Clay was going to be in charge of the park and the baseball, football field. And they have, like Ginger Nixon's one that's, they could get to be on a subcommittee because she was in the park board last year. She has an interest in the park, she lives across the street from it. And so we had it pretty well set up last year, but it was too cumbersome. And the other thing we had, we, the pool was a big sticking point because the city had managed it, not for nearly as many years as they had not managed it. But sometimes it's a little bit of a turf war as to who runs things. And I think what we're looking for is the most efficient, safest, best experience for kids at the pool. And they're not, in my opinion, they haven't really been getting that the last few years. We haven't been getting our money's worth as far as performance of staff, in my opinion.
Yeah, last year should have been a wake-up call because we had guards up there that was not even certified and seen a guard.
I think it was a wake-up call, I don't think anybody questioned that at all.
But if we want our guards to sit there with their cell phones as they're trying to safely guard kids. And, I mean, that's what was going on, guys. And the manager would not listen to what was said, basically.
And I think the problem, you have to find a good manager and how many people apply for the managing job, that's, I mean, that's the main.
These people.
You're going to have that everywhere, I mean.
But if you have a love, you know, I, if you have a love of the pool, why not take that person and let them manage a pool that they, they, they really, that's their, that's their thing in town. They don't give a hoot about the Wakefield baseball field or the football field, but they do care about the pool. They'd run an efficient pool, in my mind. But I know last year didn't work.
And if you have, if you have it set up so that they know that there are three people, one of whom is dedicated to the pool, it should make it their job easier, they should be able to say to Teresa, hey, we're having issues, talk to the park board and then the park board can talk to the county if we need things done, at least it'll be clear. And that was, that was hard to have happen last year because it wasn't, wasn't clear. So I, I value what you're saying, you know, that it needs to, we need to have a map.
Just so everyone's clear, Paige was not anyone's first choice. She didn't even want to do it. She was the only one that wanted to be an assistant. We called Jenna McAfee, we felt out some other adults, but when it was time to play the cards, she was the only one willing to do it. So it's not like she turned in her application and the office was like, that's it, she's the one. So finding a good manager is hard, right? And you get, just so no one thinks that like, you know, that was her first pick. She wasn't even her first pick, but.
But if we are working out of the city office on all the, all the issues that come up before the city, and we can find a dedicated group that is focused on the pool, I would think it would relieve some of the time investment from the people that work in the city office and it would create a better situation, not a worse situation. And I think we have those people. I know that they've talked to people that are willing, are willing to be managers. And they've talked to people that are, we got, we had one guard last year that would not come back to Wakefield if they had the same management. They were going to go to Wayne to guard, so.
Yeah, I think that, I mean, to take it off their, their hands too, I think that would be, I'd probably appreciate it too.
That's what I was hoping for, but it's just, and I think, I think that we've got people that are willing to do it and will do it. They've done a good job, and if they don't.
So is this, is this the ordinance we need or is, do we need something else, Teresa?
If you, if you specifically want to set it up so that the park board has to appoint committees, then we need to, something different. Say they're going to have three.
Well, if the park board doesn't have to appoint, but they do appoint.
That's okay, that's up to them and that's.
I think this leaves it open-ended.
That leaves it open-ended.
If, if you wanted to say, the park board shall have the authority to establish subcommittees to manage, you know, individual, you know, areas of the park, you could maybe add something like that. But if you don't need to even say that, then.
You don't, then it's up to the park board to make that decision, then it, it leaves entirely up to them.
I think as long as we have that option, it'd be fine, I mean, I don't see anything.
So we don't need to mess with any of this?
I think, I think we just had the questions, I think the questions have been.
The second thing is, this, this, this ordinance will not allow the park board to hire the pool people. The city still hires the pool people under this ordinance, they're just under the supervision of the park, park board.
Well, that didn't work last year because the city hired her and she did not listen to the park board people at all.
Well, she didn't have any obligation to, I mean, the chain of command was with the city office.
That's what I'm saying, it doesn't work that way, Teresa, you need to change it.
Okay, if, if you want the park board to hire these people, then they need to, then we need some coordination between the city office and the park board in terms of advertising.
We've already got advertising going, they're willing to do that without.
Whatever background checks are required and all those kinds of things, are the park board members who are volunteers going to be able to do that? Or do they work with the city office to get those, you know, requirements?
We talked about that and they are working with the city office on that requirement.
Okay, I just want to make sure that I have what in that ordinance, if we prepare a new ordinance, if we have in there, you know, that, that the park board is, is the actual people that hire those positions, they're not just supervising those positions.
They could recommend.
Recommend to the council?
Are you afraid to let them hire their, I mean, why are we afraid to let them hire the person?
No, I wouldn't, no.
I mean, they got, if you're, if you're a former pool manager and you got two of those that were successfully running the Wakefield pool and you've got one of the A M Ts that answers a lot of calls in Wakefield and they're, they have an interest in it, pretty soon they're not going to have an interest in it, they're going to say to heck with it.
But there has, if, if we're setting up a chain of command, you have to follow it. I think that the, the park committee, park board would approve whatever they recommended. I don't think there'd be a problem with that. I just think then it follows the chain of command the way it's supposed to.
But you were saying you have the city hire the person.
Well, the city's writing the check, aren't they? Ultimately, the city is going to, rather than per the recommendation of the pool committee, I suppose.
That's what I would like to see, and that's what needs to happen.
Okay, so, so, so what, what we want, what you want on, in your, in your ordinance is that the park board interviews the posi, for the positions and they recommend to the city council who gets hired?
Yes, that's what we, that's what we told the, that's what we told the, we've told that to the, to Teresa, that's what we plan on doing.
Well, that's what you need to know, I, I mean, I can, I can. Well, that's what you need to know. I, I mean, I can, I can, we can make that change so that it reflects that in the ordinance.
And I would think that, that they would, the pool, the, the group of people that we have, the two former, uh, pool managers, I would think that they could go through those applicants and hire those positions and bring that to the city coun, to the park board and then bring it to the city council. I don't think, Scott probably doesn't have any interest in hiring, going to, you know, do you? Or do you?
No, I don't, no.
Well, I do think the recommendations, the hiring should come from the board.
Yeah, I do, I do too.
From the three-member board.
But if the pool, if they could be interviewed by two former managers and the E M T that answers almost every call, they could, they could, they could interview the applicant, so they could take the recommendation to the park board and the park board could take it to the city council.
Right, yes, I think that's...
Well, that's what we were hoping to get out of this ordinance when I talked about, I mean, we've been talking about this since January, since last year, actually.
It's just not clear. I don't...
Yeah, we just need to adjust the language a little bit.
Yeah.
That's what we're trying to get to.
And we can still move forward. They, they can still take action so that we're ready to go. And we'll get it passed for sure by then. It's okay? Okay, okay.
As far as background checks, I've had three a year for like, and I'm done because I'm not coaching anything. I'm done being Boy Scout, uh, merit badge counselor because I'm tired of background checks. If they can't figure out, then not completely nuts, then forget about it.
Do they check us on top of?
So, there's a couple, you can introduce this ordinance for the first reading and we can come back with the changes and amend it at the next meeting, or we can just come back at the next meeting.
I just come back the next meeting and get it right?
If you wanna do.
Yeah. Don't you think?
I mean, I don't know how fast you wanna move it along because the pool season's coming up.
Well, we need to get, I would think we need to, we need one of the manager positions, don't we?
Well, and you are because you're advertising. So we can bring back one and you can just waive all the readings at next meeting and it'll accomplish the same thing.
And does that, does that change include that we take out the assistant manager and the lifeguards? It's just the person answers? Just the manager answers? Okay, thank you.
So we'll just come back with a new, new one next meeting.
Okay. So we're not gonna appoint anybody to the boards. We'll just let Sam continue on on the C R A. Hopefully he's back now and then we will appoint those members next, uh, if we ever get those ordinances through. Uh, so we can skip nine, ten, drawdown, community development block grant, and this is for the Mr. Street project, is that right? Both of these are, Zach?
Yes.
We have, can we do them together, Lee?
I would do them separately.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve the drawdown on community development block grant eighteen, Public Works zero one thirteen.
So moved in the amount of eleven thousand, two hundred dollars.
Perfect. And Scott?
Hi.
Larry?
Hi.
Russ?
Hi.
And we've got eleven is approval of a down, drawdown on number ten, same thing. I think it's the same project, right? Just another check. And it's a bigger one, right?
No.
It's smaller.
Nine thousand four...
Nine thousand? So you got a motion and we get a second, we'll get that through.
Make a motion, approve drawdown number, uh, C, C D B G eighteen P W zero one three. Second.
Okay, Larry?
Hi.
Russ?
Hi.
Val and Scott?
Hi.
And then we've got the next thing on our list of things to do is the res, passage of resolution four twenty twenty. No, that's wrong. Is that right? Authorizing mayor to sign Dollar General documents?
It's ordinance six.
It's an ordinance now?
Yeah, because it deals with real estate, so...
Okay, passage of res, of the ordinance. Is that the same number? No.
Six.
Twenty twenty.
Passage, passage of ordinance six twenty twenty, authorizing mayor to sign Dollar General documents. And we had those, you looked at those on your computer, I'm sure?
What are I on this document again?
Discussion.
See, this is, um, Teresa has contacted all the landowners, um, that would be affected.
There'd be a copy on your desk too.
And they've all agreed, other than the owner of the Dollar General property, that this Wag lands that, um, which deferred to Dollar General, which has the lease to operate the store. And it's been three weeks now and we can't get any response from them.
It's been way longer than that.
It's been a long time, yeah.
So we're trying to move this along, so we get it all, everybody lined up to do it, and then, I don't know, did you send the email to Wag Land?
Yeah, I s, I just, I didn't even contact Dollar General. I sent directly to the landowner and say, I think you can sign this if you will. We'll see if they do.
So if she would sign it on behalf of the family, then we'd have everybody signing off on it and we could proceed with the, you know, the next step in the process. So what this does is authorize you, the mayor is on behalf of the council to sign any documents to go ahead and allow housing is, is one of the, um, uses after the industrial tract.
What I think, what I think is the problem is we, it's very unclear with the current covenants and restrictions out there whether or not that kind of housing and apartment buildings is, is, is allowed. And so we've asked them to clarify either the language or allow us to make an amendment to the language. So without any further direction from them, I propose this amendment to the covenants and restrictions. It just simply says out there on the industrial tract that we can have housing. That's all it says. You know, it just adds that specific language on page two, the underlying language in the second big paragraph.
Has this language right here?
Yes. So they...
But Dollar Store hasn't signed off on it. But the owner, the owner, who owns the lot, the Dollar Store or the...
No, the Dollar Store is a, is a tenant.
They lease it.
The Do, they lease it, uh-huh. So I, I, our first contact was with the owner of the real estate. They said we'd like Dollar General's input. Dollar General has put us off for three or four weeks at least, maybe longer. So I'm, I'm going back to the origin, the owners and saying, look, I don't really think we need Dollar General to weigh in on this. You can sign it. You're the owner of the real estate. We'll see what they say, you know, so...
I, I can see that. If they're the owner of the real estate, Dollar General is leasing that property then?
Right.
They're leasing, okay.
See, the reason they wanted to defer to Dollar General is because that's who originally proposed... Yes.
That was original with Dollar General.
It wasn't really Dollar General. It was, it was an investment group that looked for real estate for Dollar General. And they're the ones that propose, propose these covenants, which we whittled back some. But now we're in a position where, you know, it's not clear in this language whether or not we can put, because it forbids living quarters, sleeping apartments, or lodging rooms. Does that mean, does that mean like homeless shelters and that sort of thing, or does that mean any kind of housing? Except that it allows, currently allows motels and hotels, which are temporary. So we're saying, okay, let's just say temporary living quarters, sleeping apartments, or lodging rooms. We'll leave that. But single-family dwellings, two-family dwellings, and multifamily dwellings and motels and hotels are permitted. How about that? Would that be okay with you? That's what we're just proposing to them.
So have they agreed to this then?
No.
Everyone else, everyone, the owner of the...
Says they will sign this, yeah. But these people, I'm trying, instead of waiting for them to respond, I'm trying to push, I'm trying to push something and say, okay, you know, how about this? Because we haven't heard from you.
So, but, so why would we, why would we pass the ordinance if they are, if, can't you send the ordinance and tell them, are you guys ready to sign this for us or not? And why are we passing the ordinance?
So that you have the authority to sign on behalf of the city when, when...
Oh, when you get that, yeah.
Yeah, when everybody's, when everybody's ready to do that, yeah.
So Teresa, this today that showed up at three fifteen, okay, this is the letter that you sent to these people?
Yes.
Okay. The only question I have on this is, we're talking in the future, other lots in block three may also be considered for apartment buildings if this amendment is approved. Okay, my understanding is lot, block, block three, is that where Tom wants to build?
Yes.
Okay, so in the future, other lots in block three, because that, he wants to build one already and in the future he might want to put another one in block three.
Same block, yeah.
Why didn't we mention that in the future possibly lots one, two, and four may be considered for housing? You know, we, we talked about that.
I just said other, I, I, I don't, you know, I left it broad with not specific lots.
It is sedating here, lot three, why didn't we, why don't we put in the future other lots to be considered to be lot one, two, and four? Because we talked that, about that for council to maybe consider that down the road. And the planning and zoning discussed it last month and they said, we'll deal with that on a one-to-one basis. But I think we need to include that in this letter to them because I think it's important that we have that all ready to go with all this work that we're doing now.
Let me, let me clarify. This language, this amendment will not deal just with lot three. It will deal with all of the, all of the industrial tract, all the lots out there.
So it is all included?
So it's all included, yeah. It isn't specific to this lot. It's just saying we have a developer interested in lot three and, um, there may be other lots that, 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 that will come up for consideration in the future. That's what the meaning of it is, Larry.
So in the fu...
Covers that.
In the future, other lots in block three may be considered for apartment buildings in this amendment if approved.
Block three, block three has one, two, three, four, and five.
Lots.
Block three...
Has all those multiple, four lots?
Has five lots, but the fifth one is Z Z.
Okay.
Right behind you.
Yeah.
Show me block, block three, where?
This is, lot, lot three is all this.
Block three is all that?
Yeah.
Okay.
And this is block four.
Single lot, it's a block.
Okay, block three covers lot one, two, three, four, and five. Okay, so that is the whole block of three.
Right.
Okay. And it really, it, it doesn't really exclude anyplace else that might be available in the whole industrial tract, honestly, because this amendment would cover all the lots that were covered, you know, in the industrial tract except the three lots that were already sold before Dollar General came here, or two lots plus theirs, and that's...
Because they don't have any restrictions.
They don't. Stan McAfee's isn't covered by this because he was there first, and Body Plant was there first, and Z and Z was there. They were all there before these covenants and restrictions went on, onto that industrial tract. So those three aren't even included in this, but everything else is.
Okay. So the original contract that we signed back in one two fifteen...
That's the one this amendment would, would go to?
Yes.
Attached to, okay.
And you don't think we'll have any problem with the prohibited things in it?
No, not if, all this ordinance says is if they come through and say it's okay, it's a go, they're okay with that changes, this allows the mayor to sign without having another meeting. Am I right?
Yes.
Okay.
I feel more comfortable actually having a special meeting and just getting to sign that. Right, well, I mean, we can sign it quick to that way as well.
Yeah, I'd like to see another special media. I don't have a problem showing up. If we get a green light tomorrow, I mean...
Why? I mean, we're, we all agree that, you know, we're okay moving forward with housing.
You gotta trust me.
I, I'm gonna trust you on this one.
I would too. Very much so.
It doesn't make any difference to me, but...
If you're all comfortable with that, then, you know, that's fine. But I feel like if our intention is to have housing on this lot, um, and we're just waiting on Dollar General, I feel like once they push it through, then...
We know what's going on there.
We may not hear from them until it's not something anyway, but...
What do you guys think, Val?
I, I agree with Ross, sorry.
I, I would, I would have a problem now that it's pretty clear what it means to what it's saying.
If you're comfortable signing it, even if we have any questions, we come and ask you.
Well, if you have questions, then the calls, the calls...
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So somebody then needs to introduce it.
I was just gonna say, we, we could have avoided all this and we would have not signed that lease with them originally. And we had people clamoring for us to hurry up in, in the name of progress to sign the lease, and we signed one that we probably shouldn't have signed.
I've moved to introduce ordinance six twenty twenty, authorizing the mayor to sign Dollar General documents.
Second.
Okay, Val?
Hi.
Oh, you gotta read something else, Nick?
Well, all you gotta do is introduce it, and then there's a motion to waive the three readings that you wanna pass.
You got a second? We don't need a second?
Somebody needs to make the motion.
You don't wanna waive the three readings?
Should you make the motion to waive this?
I made the motion. Yes.
Then you need a second.
Second.
Now.
But don't we have to wait on the three?
No, not to introduce it, you don't have to.
You don't, okay. Ross?
Hi.
Val?
Hi.
Scott? Larry?
Hi.
All right. Next one?
Now there's, you're gonna pass it, now you need a motion for final passage, since they waived the three readings. Unless you don't want them to do that.
I just introduced it. That's all I did to begin with. Now, then we...
I'll make a motion for final pass, but ordinance six twenty twenty.
And you gotta waive the three readings?
That's already been done.
Oh, that's already been done, okay.
Second.
I don't know who turned it, Larry?
Hi.
Ross? Val?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Scott, you in favor of it? Okay. Next item is still the passage of resolution five twenty twenty, authorizing mayor to sign, uh, the agreement with the school. So this is with the, uh, the football field?
Yeah, and now, now we didn't prepare a resolution because we don't have a memorandum of understanding put together yet, so I think we're just gonna, we kind of figured the council would wanna see the memorandum in this case. And so it's kind of a discussion thing, I think.
I think Mrs. Farb would maybe like to share something.
Mrs. Farb, you got a thing you can tell us?
About, uh...
The memorandum of understanding?
For the project or the, whatever you want to tell us.
Is it on, on the grant?
Yes, yes. Do you wanna do the presentation?
What's that?
Do you wanna show them the presentation? Clip? Nick, do you have that? Maybe just try to tell them what we're submitting.
Well, this is, um, our beginning drawings and renderings of, of the project, so this is kind of the beginnings. So there's still, uh, room for, you know, additions and suggestions and things like this, but this is our first, um, go at this, um, the drawings. And so the mockups of what we are, what we are proposing. Um, so, uh, I've showed it to kids and showed it to staff and I've gotten a lot of positive, uh, feedback from it. Um, so it is a facility. One thing that is, is actually they're going to, the feedback that we've already given them, that there will be an entrance from the northwest corner. So where there's people are down there in the, in the bottom, there'll be a sidewalk coming from the northwest corner. There will be, uh, parking stalls on, uh, kinda on the road there, and so with handicap parking, so you'll be able to get there. And, uh, so, um, just a few, few things of that, but, uh, the, uh, the design that they, that they really helped us with was, uh, to have everything concession stand, press box, stands, restrooms, all very, um, you know, centrally located. Uh, the mezzanine areas where you see the picnic tables are also, I think, a neat, um, neat addition, a neat aspect. The one thing that even if you look at this rendering, doesn't show the, the line of sight to the football field will be a lot better even than this. Um, the, the structure will be higher than this, this kind of site. The, uh, the architects we've been working with, um, really taking into account the experience of the, of the fans, uh, the line of sight. So this, you'll have a lot better line of sight than, uh, that, with that mockup shows, so. This, these are the first, um, uh, first kind of drawings. What it doesn't show underneath the press box and concession stand will be team room, so if you see the in, inserts into the stands, that's where the kids will... so if you see the in, inserts into the stands, that's where the kids will come out onto the field. Obviously on a, on a, you know, gotta have a covering of the, of the track for the kids to come out on. But, um, this is, uh, this is the beginning of the drawing, so, um, uh, really excited about this. Um, this, I think it looks a really neat, uh, neat facility, um, good experience for fans, and, uh, I think it's, um, uh, real positive that, uh, this can get done. So I think there's a video, there's.
Go back one, Nick. Was that blanked?
Right there, should be a video.
It was just blank.
Is it blank?
It's blank. There's not, well, it worked for me.
Yeah. So.
There's supposed to be like a walkthrough.
Yeah.
Is there, is there a play button on that anywhere?
On that slide?
On the previous slide? It wasn't on my computer either, 'cause I looked at it on my computer.
So there is no memorandum of understanding?
Can you put that on the screen?
No.
Can I ask you, where are you planning on parking the vehicles? You say, okay, right?
There, if you look on right there, and I don't know if you can pause that, but the street, uh, to the, to the north.
Right.
There'll be, there'll be, uh, uh, parking lots, you know, that face the football field all through there. And then, you know, you can't see it from this, but to the, uh, to the east, we have a student parking lot that, um, can be, that will be expanded as well. Actually, we're gonna, we're gonna do that already, uh, that's already in the plans to, um, expand the parking in the gravel parking lot, which is, was pretty significant. Um, and I've been, I've had other experience, well, you know, I've had to walk six blocks to watch our district, well, you know, I don't want that.
No.
And, and so I think there's gonna be ample parking, um, on that street and to the, to the, uh, um, it'll be a better experience than we have for basketball, I know that already, so, um, but that, the parking lot to the, uh, east of the field, and east of the practice field, and then, uh, I'm talking with Rex about the, if you know, the, the practice grass field directly to, can also be used for parking if we wanted, if we needed to. Um, there are some, but if you see that, right there, there are some, a few, uh, high powered sprinkler heads that we'd have to mark and make sure we don't talk, but don't drive over, but you can, um, you, we can park in that in good conditions, obviously, we had rain or something, you don't want big ruts and things like that, and we have some work, but, uh, we have space, we have space for parking, I think, I think it, uh, will be, and then for, you know, hopefully, yeah, we will have, uh, handicap parking accessible on that, uh, road to the north.
Because that's what I hear a lot, is the parking, you gotta have decent parking, because you're gonna have a nice facility.
Yeah.
Let's have decent parking so everybody can enjoy it, because there's no much.
There, there is a, we, we have, uh, and I, I don't wanna speak for anybody, but we have a, uh, jun-, a junior, senior-to-be girl who's related to, uh, an aunt who has some lots across the street that would be possible, possibly looking at, um, you know, uh, acquiring those. Uh, I've heard that she's in the, in the market to sell, um, on, I think that's Eighth Street, on the north side of Eighth Street, and then, you know, that would possibly be a good situation for the church that's on Seventh Street to use as a parking spot for the church, so, uh, maybe a multi-use thing there, so. That's another possibility, I wanna speak for that, but that's definitely something we would consider. And underneath the, uh, press boxes, that we're working on the design, but we have enough room under there for, um, officials' accommodations, storage, uh, things like that. We're also, uh, contemplating using those team rooms, uh, or one of them for a wrestling room, practice area, so that, um, would give it, uh, you know, other, other opportunities for, to use it, so.
Cause at Eighth Street, I'm just concerned there's no turnaround there, you know, it's a dead end right now, is how we're gonna be able to turn vehicles around there?
Right.
And get them daggedly parked on your terrace without going in somebody else's driveway, or.
Right, yeah.
We don't want that to be happening, so.
No, but I, I think there's, I know there's enough, you know, there has to be some excavation, but to, to face at an ninety-degree angle directly, directly to the football field and then be able to back up.
Yeah, you can, you can stay on your own property and make a turnaround there on your, but it's so important to have decent parking, because it's so dang frustrating when you have a nice facility and it takes you up too long to get there.
And I, I've subbed and hooked it up to the track, so I'm thinking, if I fall up there, how are the rescue guys gonna get to me?
Well, that's a, that's a big, that's a big part of, we have to, you know, we, you know, we have to work the fire, and about a fire road from the back to make sure we have enough access to, to get there, so that, that's, you know, definitely something, um, that the construction company people that we've consulted with have, have in mind to make sure that they have that, but, uh, you know, I believe in you, I think you're, yeah, I think it'll be all right.
Don't laugh. I thought about that, as I'm watching him throw the shot at me.
Mr. Farb, what are you guys calling the project, just so I can click right in the track?
Uh, I've been putting, uh, this Trojan Stadium project, so it's track, football field, it could be wrestling, and I, and, multi-sport, yeah, multi-sport, but in multi, multi-use. Um, I, I really, um, my vision is that this is a, a very positive addition to the community, where the community can access it, um, twenty-four seven, where, um, different organizations can, uh, rent it out and use it for all kinds of different things, so, um, to, you know, that's, you know, the, one of the, you know, talking to teachers, obviously, they're, um, I think they're really forward and positive, I think it helps the school for the future, you know, depending on, you know, we, we know the co-op situation didn't quite work out, um, but, uh, it may come down the road five, ten years ago, and if we had facilities like this, I think that would position us really well, um, for any co- co-op or consolidation, uh, issues. Um, and, uh, you know, uh, the, uh, I don't know where it's going, but just, uh, being able to use it for your community, community use is really, really important.
Questions? So we don't, there's no action tonight?
Right, Jim, nothing.
Yeah, the only requirement will be if we get funded with this grant, that the city has to have an MOU in place saying we have this property is, is ours, so at fifty-fifty split, you know?
So who's gonna prepare that memorandum? That was the question, do you want us to do, or does the school, or, how are we gonna do that?
I would guess that would be something the city attorney would do.
What, you're in the school attorney, that's why?
This school attorney.
Yeah, the school attorney, I've, been, he's been helping us with the procurement, um.
And we're just talking this area.
Yep.
So, yeah, if he gets something thrown together, then he can just email it to us, or mail it, or.
Okay.
See what our commitments are, right?
Do we wait for the grant?
I mean, you can do it.
You're working on that memorandum anytime. I was, I was a little concerned, because I went at the mayor's meeting, Lynn Rex, who's the executive director of the League of Municipalities, was there, and I asked her about the Civic and Community Center Financing Fund and qualifications, and she said that we had to have ownership before we ever started the grant application. And she does a lot of work with the legislature, so I thought that's kind of a concern. And then I was, I would also went to the Civic and Community Center Financing Fund presentation, got a young lady there that was really nervous, I think she went through, she just had a slide up and she read everything on it. It was supposed to be forty-five or fifty minutes, it lasted about fifteen minutes, and she was done, but she read really fast. But, uh, two of the things I learned there were, there's a two-year set-up period, if you are funded, then you can't apply for that five hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars again for two years. So the city is giving that up. And then, uh, the other thing is that, um, priority is given to cities that haven't been funded previously, so we're taking a little bit of a hit on that if we get funded. So the city is giving up some in this, uh, in this process. But I called Jenny Mason, who directs the fund, and she said that we don't have to have, uh, ownership of the prop, fifty percent ownership until the grant is funded and you start work, so we are okay as far. I was real concerned when Lynn Rex said we had to have ownership before we started the grant, but we didn't. Uh, but we can also get a planning grant, we're eligible for a fifteen thousand dollar planning grant if we wanna plan something else, and she said that really helps to do the planning grant a year ahead of time as far as, um, the selection committee, so that's something we probably would look into. And, uh, they also talked about the community development block grants. But what, what are your plans, you're gonna do it in, I know when I was at your meeting, you were gonna do it in phases, like phase one? Is that still your plan, to do it in phases?
Nope.
You're gonna fund it all in one?
We're, we're go for it, I mean, you know.
You're gonna do it all at once?
That's, we, we, we're starting the fundraising phase, and we'll see, see where we get. Um, our, our, I know our desire is, is to, to be able to do that without, you know, going to taxpayers or going, raising taxes at all, and, and I think we can, I think we can do that. The school does have significant, um, monies, uh, budget away already for capital expenditures, so I think we gotta, you know, the, the grant would be a great start, um, but, uh.
So you won't start construction until you have all the money on hand?
Sorry.
You won't start constructing until you have all the funds?
Correct, well, correct, yeah.
Well, that's your plan, and are you gonna make a soccer field also? You're gonna market for soccer, so. Any other questions?
What's your caution on this project?
Well, you know, we're, we, uh, we, uh, estimate, there's estimation for twenty-three and three and a half million, is the estimate, but that's, you know, we haven't done the, I mean, this is the design that we've gone with, and the, the builder hasn't signed on the dotted line that, that'll be, you know, three and a half million guaran-, you know, guaranteed, so we haven't gotten there yet, so.
So in this project, the city will be responsible to have light, water, and sewer where you need it?
That's part of the grant.
Okay.
That's in this grant, that we would extend all the utilities and, yeah. Right, that's covered in the grant, I believe.
I mean, that's what you guys have talked about, is, is doing that.
Put that towards the budget.
Did you know?
Yeah, that goes towards the budget.
No, we're, we're, we're committed, if we get the funding, to use part of that funding from our, uh, Civic and Community Center Financing Fund for the extension of the utilities, right? That's what I thought we were, we'd made that.
Well, the, I mean, the five hundred and sixty-two thousand is going towards the project, and then you guys would probably have extra on top of that to extend the utilities.
No, we don't have that for you, we don't understand it that way.
Addition?
We understood that it was gonna be taken out of the funds of.
That was my question, so the city's gonna pay for the city, the lights, water, and sewer to the spot?
Plus the grant?
That's what you guys had discussed.
No, we were, we discussed our January retreat that we were, would extend utilities, that that would be a goal for this last year, to try to get the school to move in the direction of completing their football field. But at no time did we commit that we were gonna pay you the utilities, plus let you use the fund for communities, five hundred and sixty-nine thousand, plus another hundred thousand in utilities, uh, that's, that has never been talked about by us.
So what, what, this is, who's gotta guess amount of what it will cost to get light, water, and sewer?
It's about a hundred thousand, if you get it up there the right way, probably seventy to a hundred.
Easy.
City expense.
I was under the impression that.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm impressed, but it's.
And this money that we set aside was going to cover our cost of doing utilities.
Well, then you guys don't have to provide any of that, I mean.
Right, that's what we would, that's what we're at.
So the city won't do anything, because we're not gonna pay you guys, I mean, we would have to pay you guys to do that.
Well, we're all, we're all part of the same thing, but we thought if we gave you a, an opportunity to use our funding for five hundred and sixty-nine thousand, that was quite a bit to donate towards the project, that's, that's our feeling as a city.
So you will charge the school then to hook up those utilities?
That was my understanding, yeah.
I understood that.
Oh, yeah, no, that wasn't the, that's not how usually it works, but that's, I mean, whatever you guys wanna do.
Yeah, it's, you know.
We're gonna cross that bridge when we get there.
From the school's standpoint, you're not obligated for anything.
Okay.
But if you wanna help, no problem.
Well, we think we're helping a lot with the grant.
Yeah, absolutely.
That I agree.
I mean, you understand the grant, none of that's coming out of our pocket, I mean, that's something we could have used for something else, although we had nothing planned.
Well, I would think, you know, you know, we, here's the deal, guys, we've got a sewer that has gone to the bathroom with the park that overflows, anytime you got a crowd of any size there, we dump raw sewage. We haven't been able to fix that because we haven't had the funds. And it was closed last year, if you were at a football game, it was closed for two, the women's locker, the room, women's restroom was locked for two football games because the sewage was spilling out on the floor. So we have obligations besides, and I would be very much, as a mayor, very much opposed to spending more than, we've given them access to funding that was intended originally for municipalities. And if you look at this, the taxing ability, a school has a great deal more, uh, taxing ability than a small town like Waco. Uh, I would be totally o- opposed to that. As far as I'm concerned, we've given them a great benefit with the five hundred and sixty-nine thousand.
So if we don't get the grant, then you'll put the hundred thousand dollars worth of utilities in?
We talked about, all we've ever done is talked about it in a January retreat about goals, and one of our goals was to try to extend utilities, maybe to help the school complete their football field. But we had no idea it was gonna be a three and a half million dollar project, we were just thinking, we could get lights up there and a restroom, so they could have restroom facilities, but, but I like your plan. I hope it, I hope the fundraising comes in, maybe it will, but, you know.
And I, I just wanted to be clear, you know, if this process moves forward, the city's gonna have to come up with water and lights and sewer, I mean, and where are we gonna take that money from? What are we gonna take it away from? I think that's something the council better be prepared to con- consider, because.
It's coming out of this five hundred and sixty-nine thousand, Val.
Not, not if it goes to the school.
Am I missing something here? That's imaginary money, I mean, it's not imaginary, it's real them, but it's not something that we took out of our budget to give to them.
No, but every dollar that will be, that's, that will come, I mean, you have five hundred and sixty-nine thousand, and you're seeking funding more than that, I assume, to match this grant. And those are all tax dollars, those are already donated dollars, those are, there's not an hour.
We were much under budget on the South Main project, we just, we're what, half of what we budgeted for the Lundy project. I mean, we're, we're coming under, we're doing okay, is all I'm saying. So I'm just saying, I'm open to discussing providing funding for utilities for this project if it goes through.
Yeah, we haven't gotten that far yet.
Right, we're crossing that bridge when we get there.
Or do you have a, an expenditure amount, Matt, for, for utilities in that budget?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it did deserve it, you know, I mean.
The water and sewer literally is not a big deal, because it's there on Eighth Street, so the extension of electric is gonna be a little bit costly, but.
Well, I hope a dollar, I hope a dollar on some issues, I hope a hundred dollars on one issue that we don't have funding for, and then you talk a hundred thousand dollars, that's, it's almost like, well, we can't do that, we don't have any money in the budget, but we can do this, even though it's a hundred times more, then we don't wanna hear that story about how we don't have any money.
I wasn't aware of the issue with the park, maybe we need to look at budgeting.
It's been that way forever, it's been that way, it's ridiculous.
Maybe this budget cycle, we should learn to do something.
Well, a lot of the mothers at the football game thought, so I know that, I was jumped down there as a mayor that we.
Well, let's, let's talk about it, budget time this summer.
All right, thanks for your, thanks for the information.
It was nice to see.
We better, I, I like the fact you're do-, you know, you've got a really nice plan. That'd be something the community could be really proud of.
Yeah, that's, that's my, that's my goal, I know. Something that really helps the community and is significant of a town that is growing, when so many towns our size throughout Nebraska is now, are not, I think it's gonna be, uh, that's my goal, is to bring this to this, to this town and, and this city, and something we can point to, uh, we were proud, just similar to the baseball field.
All right, thank you very much. Um, the next thing we've got is the rural three sixty, a letter of engagement. And we talked about that, uh, a little bit, got some information from Brady's here tonight, appreciate him being here. And I think we've kind of, uh, asked most of the questions, haven't we, Talos? And Val?
I think we talked about changing that, just that, what was that, Ross, uh?
Uh, just to, other than committing to it, just say, consider.
Considering, just so we don't... And you're okay with that, then?
Yeah, like, when they, when they price the houses, they'll just price it as
Okay.
the city's not committing anything, it'll just be a full price.
All right, thank you.
And then, and then we can send it off to Steve and then if, if there's anything, we can answer questions.
I really appreciate all the information you've gotten and you started a long time ago, and appreciate that, that you included all of us and gave us a lot of really good information. So I think that we, and it's, the amount is three sixty, is that correct?
Three hundred and sixty, Val.
Okay. Anything else?
You need a motion to approve, authorize you to sign it.
Yeah, I was just wondering, do you have, do you have a question?
No, I was gonna make a motion.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the mayor's sign letter of grant for rural housing three sixty.
And I didn't then follow your conversation, are you changing it? I mean, 'cause the second page of this says you're not gonna...
I'm glad you don't follow the whole thing, 'cause I can follow about half of what we're doing today.
Go down, right?
I'm binding.
Right there.
I'm binding, yep.
Okay. Wherever it went, there, keep going, right there. Does not require other party proceeds to completion of a binding final agreement, where parties are not contractually bound, so it's just like a letter of intent.
It's, it's just basically telling them we would be interested in helping with these things, but in the end you don't...
But there's two or three things that we can do, and there might be more.
So, I mean, if you're interested in checking those things, you're, based on that, right, you're not bound to do it. It's just saying that you might be interested in helping with those things.
I think we found three things that we can definitely sign off on.
Those four thousand dollars are the things that we already do.
Okay. But, but can you, but you can check those? If there are things on there, you can just go ahead and check those, correct? Like your permits, the fees, you can just go ahead and check.
We've got three things.
Okay.
I think we said five, seven, twelve, and thirteen.
Five, seven, twelve, and thirteen, okay.
Is that right, everybody?
So that's your motion? What's the number?
Yeah.
I do it anyways, Ross. I do it so I can...
Oh, you do?
Yeah. Do we get a second discussion, will you?
Second.
I interrupted before she did.
So you got, Val, you got that?
Five, seven, twelve.
And Larry said thirteen, or something.
We can come up with someplace on...
Ross?
Aye.
Hi.
Scott?
Aye.
All right, Larry, okay. And the next thing is approve hotel study agreement, or talk about it at least.
Did you ever get a chance to talk to Walter?
I talked to, um, people in Pender that worked with him in the motel down there, and the answer is no, I haven't talked to him yet, but I'm applying on it, but they said that Walter Ashoff, if he is interested in putting a motel in, that he wants fifty percent of the funding from local investors before he starts, and I think that's what we ran into, wasn't it, Jim?
Well, he didn't like the location either, so...
But did you, didn't he have a hard time coming up with investors? Is that what it was?
I don't know if we ever got to that point, to be honest. He just, after the Napa store went in, uh, he just didn't like the location that was left for him, so... He's still interested in, in doing something, but, uh, you know, it's gotta be his terms, his location, and and, um, so question is, is, you know, what's that take to, to get him here to help get moving, but...
I think it'd be beneficial to get, to move on with the, the hotel study and, and do it, uh, and see what else. Maybe there's other options out there after we get the study done, but like they said, nothing's gonna happen unless we get the hotel study done.
I agree. I guess I just think about other priority projects. Maybe we've been working on a grocery store for five years, you know? You know, a hotel's important, I realize that, but a grocery store's important too, and we've been working on that for five years and and some of the stumbling blocks we've had is with CBA with their bins down there. And I don't know...
I mean, I agree with you, grocery store's important too, but this is what we're at right now with this. I think we need to move along with this.
What's the CRA, was the CRA that talks about contributing?
Sales tax.
CRA vote was...
Sales tax, okay.
Sales tax would do it all.
Who would?
Sales tax.
Well, sales tax, I talked to my wife, who happens to be on that committee, and
They'd do it all?
She said she and Cheryl didn't understand the, uh, the whole thing, it was their first meeting, and she said she's not in favor of doing it, so that's just one vote that was a yes.
All right, it was talked about, the CRA would contribute half. If you look at the funds and what they're, where they come from and what they're intended for, it really makes sense for sales tax to do it, so wherever, we, we have a, I mean, at one point, we talked about contributing half from the CRA.
And that would help, but...
And seven thousand dollars total, right? Is that what it was?
Yeah, we're doing it in two phases. First phase is thirty-five, and then it was favorable, they're gonna move to the second phase and you...
That's what John said, the two phases, I mean, I, I...
Have they got two parties in, should it split it?
Two parties in Restonville and the motel?
Oh, no.
I'm looking for the study because CRA, Gerald said, you're interested in doing it?
As long as it's legal for us to do it, I guess, but I got that. We'd have to double check that for sure, I suppose, but...
And the sales tax is...
If we're talking about seventy-five hundred dollars, that's what we're talking about, right? And we wanna split that between sales tax and the CRA?
Yep.
Okay, so, I don't know if the CRA can, we talked about it.
We've, we've, we've talked about it, but...
And once this study's done, this is out there for anyone to see that is interested in doing a motel?
That's the first question Megan gets when she's talked to anybody about, well, you have it, you have your study done, right?
Well, the feedback, the feedback that we got, that I got in Pender was the fact that they, there's no return on the investment for most of those guys. They did more as a chance to do something for Pender. They also did one in, than Wisner that's not making any money, according to what they were telling me, they also did one, I can't, they did one in Crofton, which is making money. Probably the proximity to the lake possibly. But, you know, I think Walter likes to do things for communities where he's involved, he does a lot for Osmond, but I haven't had a chance to get a hold of him yet, so...
Well, the one in Wayne's a lot of private investors, and they're not getting any money back, but they did it because they felt Wayne needed it.
But we can't, you know, I would like to see us do that and get the local investor...
But they had a study done, yes, yeah.
That, that's the thing, you know, I understand that it's seven thousand dollars, it's kind of a lot of money for a study, but you're probably talking about a million dollar project. You know, we don't know that, million plus problem. If, if you're gonna invest a significant amount of money in something like that, you kinda wanna know, you, where are we at with it as a community? Is this something that is gonna break even, or are we gonna lose money every month, or? And what's it gonna cost? You know, so it's really hard to jump into a project like that not knowing, 'cause that's a lot of money.
Any other discussion?
It's not like you're building yourself a house, you know what I mean? You're not gonna live in it, and you may lose money every month. So, I don't like it any more than you do, really, but if we think there's any chance of having something like this done, then you probably need to just do a motel study.
Anything else? Any other discussion?
I'd like to view the study, I'd like to see it split two ways.
What, what was that, Larry?
I, I like the study, but I'd like to see it split two ways because a couple of months shows that CRA would be interested in...
They said the CRA can't do it, though.
Well, they don't know.
We're not, we're not, we don't know for sure.
Okay.
Yeah, that CRA is a hard one, hard one to figure out.
Well, you know, every kind of legislature meets, the rules change.
I know. Yeah, I was at one of their meetings, I discussed it. Okay, we have a motion?
I'd, I'd make a motion to approve the hotel study agreement. The financing part is...
The whole seven thousand. It's not seven thousand five hundred, it's just seven thousand, right?
According to this, it's seven thousand.
I, I'm, I'll make a motion to, to begin the process of the first, first step of the thirty-five hundred.
First phase?
Yes.
And who's gonna pay for it?
This, the, us.
The city's.
Sales tax.
That's your motion, is to pay for the first part of the, the thirty-five thou- thirty-five hundred, thirty-five hundred. We need a second.
I'll second that.
Larry's second set, okay, vote, it's Scott's turn. And Larry?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
And Val?
Aye.
All right, it's unanimous. The next thing. Action on contracted labor in Graves Park, can I explain this really easily? Last year, my grandson, our grandson came back to help coach the team and helped take care of the park, and I was planning on being a volunteer, which I work twenty more hours than I usually do, because he didn't get up real early in the morning. But my intention was that the city would pay him, and I went to Zach, and Zach said, fine, just get his social security number, and then we were told that we couldn't do it legally because it's contracted labor in the budget. So he wants to come back again, and I will help him for nothing again, but I don't wanna have to pay, we don't wanna have to pay income taxes on it because it's going to him, not us. And he's in a lower tax bracket, if you can believe it. So it's on the agenda because we can't just say that, we've got to have council action on it.
So what I would see is, it sounds like you want to approve Riley to do, as worked as an independent contractor at the park.
He's just gonna...
For, I don't know, you gotta have how many dollars you're talking about?
Well, I think, I think we were paid three thousand, I don't know what it was.
It's thirty-two hundred.
This is thirty-two.
I know it said thirty-two, I thought the check was for three thousand, but I don't remember, that might've been the mayor's check. I don't, I don't have the idea, but...
Yeah, you make three thousand.
Okay, yeah, that's what it was, right?
Yeah, sixteen hundred a couple of years ago, and Larry moved to double, and so it's thirty-two now.
Yeah, yeah. And for twenty-five years, just for your information, it was zero. And I worked probably more last year than I've ever done that kind of thing, and I'm, I've got another year or two, and maybe, if Lord's willing. But I'm not gonna pay his dang income taxes anymore, so I'd like to have it go to him.
It is an independent contractor, he's gonna have to give us the, his social security number, so he can get a ten ninety-nine.
Mm-hmm.
'Cause it'll go to him.
Yeah, he had the social security number this last summer, but it didn't go.
So, is that you? Who made the motion? Or did anybody have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
For thirty-two hundred dollars.
Yep.
I assume that he'd be under supervision of the park board.
He'd be under supervision of the park board and...
Well, he's not really under supervision because he's an independent contractor, but they would tell him.
Yeah, they can get him up about six in the morning instead of... Have you got a second motion, or a second? Oh, Larry?
Aye.
Val?
Aye.
All right. Approve changes to the city of Wakefield Personnel Manual, and I think Nikki and Zach have gone over our personnel manager, and their, with manual, there's a lot of areas that were deficient. Is that right, Zach?
Skip sixteen.
Oh, no, it was sixteen. So, oh, yeah, here we go. Approve new construction building permit for Craig in.
Craig's building a new house, um, down in South Main Street, or he purchased...
You've got his commit?
You guys have copies of it, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
It's in your packet there, Phil.
Okay. So what, tell us what he's gonna build, and we'll approve it.
House.
New house.
You've got his plan?
Yep.
How many square feet is that, baby? That's a big house, too.
It's a single-story house, sixty-four by forty-four.
Nice size, nice looking house.
Nice looking house, and so you guys have copies of all that, so...
Okay, we need a motion?
It'll be in the southwest corner, right? We don't have to do this, do we?
No.
Correct. Yeah, I didn't get it, we haven't had a chance to go down there, and, uh, we'll look at the layout, but I mean, he's got two brand-new lots out there to work with, so we'll, uh, get it started here.
Okay.
When does he wanna start?
Tomorrow.
Is that right, serious?
Weather's something. So he's been rained out otherwise with...
We have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Scott made a motion, second?
Second.
Oh. I don't know who you choose, Val or Ross. And Scott?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Ross? And Val?
Aye.
All right, he can build his new house, that's a good deal. Now the personnel manual. A lot of things in our personnel manual need to be updated, and a lot of them are, uh, not active any longer, or Zach and...
I'm sure there's a lot. We're just focusing on the time off stuff right now. Currently, as it stands, we have used it or lose it, that was pretty clear in that.
You can't do that.
Article I gave to you guys, yeah, that's, no, no, so we just did as little revising as possible, and got to where we thought it was fair to the city and the staff.
So now it's use it and, or don't accrue it?
Accrue it to twelve, two forty, and then don't earn it until you spend some.
Okay.
The idea is, once you get to that certain level, take some, take some time off.
Fine, well, you want to look at it? And we're gonna approve the next payment, if you, if there's a lot of reading there. You've looked at it already?
Yeah.
Employees have, have met, and we've discussed this too, so...
Are they okay with the proposal?
You guys, you guys are all, you don't have to have any more time?
My, my only question was, so you, you don't get a lump sum of PTO for a year, vacation time, whatever you wanna call it? You guys accrue it right now, or on the change? Per pay period, basically, you're accruing it.
And the changes?
The new policy would say that.
Okay, yes.
Right now, it's a lump sum.
So a new employee, do they start accruing right away, or is it probationary period? I think so. I'm open, I just thought it'd be cleaner. You're getting like, what, three hours per pay period?
Basically.
Otherwise, if you wanna wait six to your ninety days, I'm okay with that, but then I guess I just, they would have to accrue at a faster rate.
Utilize it for the off-probation.
What is probation, six months?
Ninety days.
Ninety days.
Well, previously, you, you had to work a year before you got anything, so I think like the health and chance probation, ninety days, but time off.
So what did you put in yours? They can accrue it right away? As they start working this?
Yeah, it would be three hours per pay period. Yeah, it would be three hours per pay period. But I can change that.
I think, I think everybody sounded like they're, looked at and they're in favor of it. My, do you have a motion?
I move we approve the changes to the city of Wakefield Personnel Manual as approved.
Let me second that.
Okay. Val?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
And Ross? Mayor's public comment period. And Mogi's not here, nobody wants to talk tonight. Mogi's not here tonight. Jim, do you have his report or?
No, he's on his way back from Kearney, so-
So Jim, you're gonna give your-
You can give me anything. I know, I know they clean storm drains, Paula.
Good. I was checking on a storm drain. I tripped in one plant in Grassley on Rick's handsome yard.
So just a couple items, uh, sales tax. A very good month for sales tax. Of course, it's for the month of December, so that was our Christmas month. Almost twenty-three thousand dollars, so twenty-two-nine-eighty-four-eight. So a good start for the year, uh, almost at a hundred thousand dollars in income for those first five months. Looking forward to the rest of the year, uh, good income there as well. Uh, for the let's say update, a little discussion there. I had a priority bill, is that land bank bill, it's L B eight-four twenty-four. The governor says he doesn't think it's necessary uh, that we establish, uh, land bank throughout the whole state of Nebraska. So we're encouraged to, uh, call or email him. I did email him. Uh, I'm sure a lot of other people have as well, to, uh, encourage him to sign the legislation should it get passed. Uh, the other bill of importance is L B seven-twenty, that is that Nebraska Fannie Jack, that is uh, the incentive for our businesses, um, to expand in or, you know, come to, come to the state and get some incentives for that, so. We do have, um, people using that locally, uh, so that's a, another good, uh, idea to, uh, get that completed as well. Encourage your state senator, if you have contact with him, uh, a good idea is to encourage those two bills to get passed. Uh, we did have some, uh, discussion about the CRA and I don't know, Teresa, if you wanted to share any of that, what you discussed with, uh, about the CRA and the questions that the mayor had on some of that or not?
On the, on the funds?
Yes. Quickly if you wanted.
I just think, did you have a question about whether or not you needed to sign necessary?
Zach and I went to the meeting with the, uh, and this, this was a meeting with the state auditor's office, Craig Kibeczek was a CPA, CFE, Assistant Deputy Auditor of Public Accounts. And, uh, he papers his wall with people that have taken money from municipal governments. He has that behind his desk, he's proud of that, I guess. He also showed some of our local problems that we've had, uh, in Wakefield. And Mary Avery, the finance manager, the auditor of public accounts, finance manager was there. And, uh, he said absolutely no debit cards for cities, credit cards, we're supposed to check them really closely and he advised the clerk and the mayor that when we go over invoices, we need to be very careful. He gave us some sample invoices where there was fraud involved. And he, we went through those. And we're supposed to date and initial when we approve an invoice. And if you have a credit card, you have to have a detail, you're supposed to have a detailed invoice, because he showed those where there's a lot of abuse. Where somebody will go and get gasoline and they'll also charge lunch to the credit card. And he said that's the biggest area of, uh, abuse in the, in the local governments and he says he sees it all the time. And but, there was a fire department that, uh, he said that if, if the fire department is using the tax ID number, the money needs to go through the clerk and the mayor and the claims must be approved by the city council. And there was a fire chief there or a fireman there that said he disagreed with that because the attorney general's office gave a different opinion. And this deputy auditor, state auditor office person said that he, he said he was standing with what he was telling us. And so afterwards, I went up and asked him a couple of questions about our local problems and, and, uh, and I said, "What about our CRA?" Because they operate a little bit, you know, uh, independently of the council. And he says, "Absolutely, the mayor and clerk must approve every purchase and initial each invoice for the CRA. City council must approve all claims." And I asked him that, point blank, and that was his answer. Now, based on what the fire department person said, where the, the city or the state attorney general had a different opinion, maybe the state attorney general has a different opinion. But that concerned me, so that's why I talked to you about it.
So, um, I, so I contacted the, our CRA experts in Lincoln, who do all the legal work for the CRA because they are the experts at it and it's a complicated, it's a complicated process. And they said, um, in terms of the CRA's own money, they're in charge of that money, it doesn't go through the council for approval of expenditures and the mayor and treasurer don't sign those checks. However, if there is city sales ta- uh, city real estate tax money involved, you know, that would be a different, that would be a different question.
So like what our, what our lots sell, that money goes to the CRA? Is that money go to the CRA?
Sales tax.
Sales tax, okay.
So, so, you know, the city can budget money in the, um, in the real, in the, the tax asking for the CRA. That then, that's, that's a different thing. That's not the CRA's own money with regard to TIF money that they've captured and and their, their own fees that they may charge for projects and so on and so forth. So she said that, that was her, that was her explanation, that no, that money is just signed off by whoever the CRA authorizes to sign checks. But it may be a different question if you involve real estate tax that's budgeted through the city budget.
So this is one of the lawyers for?
Yeah.
Is that Klein Williams, Klein Williams?
Yeah.
And they're in Lincoln, I thought they were in Ohio. And they're in Lincoln?
I think they have several branches.
Well, do you think we should contact the state attorney general's office and see if, I mean, if the state auditor tells me that, it scares me that we're like, I mean, what happens if they find that we're doing something that they disagree with? That's my question.
Sure, okay. Well, I, I'll look further into it if that's what you, if you'd like more clarification, I certainly will.
Well, I know what, I mean, even if we called the state auditor's office and talked, I mean, Mary Avery's the finance director, she sat right there, didn't say anything, that opposed to what this guy said. And, uh-
But I don't think a lot of CRAs have the kind of finances that this, that we do in Wakefield.
Yeah.
And, and that, and, and they do, like for instance, Grand Island, the guy that came out and talked to this CRA, I mean, they have a, a tax asking, which is a different thing than what we have with our-
They have, uh, you, what can a CRA have up to a point a quarter?
It could, I think it was, isn't that what we learned?
I often under, I often wondered how a CRA could pool money other than like we did with, where we captured and what they call a bucket TIF, but they can, they, a CRA, they, you can have your own tax entity.
You could.
Yeah, you're, well, and of course that's, again, that's as Teresa was explaining, that's another source. But I never understood how CRAs had money, because generally if you tip something-
You lose money.
You, well, you don't-
Passes through.
It, it's a pass-through.
Yeah, passes through.
You, you don't have anything on the side of, for economic development and all that, but but a lot of cities especially, I don't know how many, I guess, but there are, there, that's how they fund the CRA is for doing extra, extra development work. And how they demolish how, you know, generate money to demolish houses and get a hold of real estate, clean up-
And that's a huge, and, and we're lucky to have the CRA. I'm not, I'm not opposed to a CRA, I'm very, we're very fortunate to have that half million dollars and have people that are willing to work towards it, but I just want to make sure we're doing it-
Yeah.
By the letter of the law, so we don't get in trouble.
Because the CRAs are under the microscope right now. Because, you know, perceived if not actual abuses that have happened and that's why the legislation changes every year as well. So I, you know, I get your concern and, um, we'll check again and make sure that there's a distinction that, that matters.
Perfect. Thank you.
Moving on, any other questions on that CRA? Uh, water treatment, uh, this question there. I went through that book, uh, I did go page for page. If you wanna jot down some numbers, I will advise you to look at a few pages.
Oh, good.
Alright?
List notes.
And, and you can definitely go through the whole book if you wish. But seven, nine, thirteen, I'll give you this Ross, if you want this, ninety-one, ninety-four, ninety-seven, page one hundred and one hundred and one. And then there are figures, thirty-one through thirty-four. That will give you the layout of the three proposed sites of the water treatment plants. So when you're looking at it, I hope you're sitting down, because price tag is, is healthy. Uh, we're looking at six big numbers there, six million dollar projects.
You're kidding.
I know.
And that's just the, the facility?
Well, it's land and everything, so if, if you get rolled into that whole thing. So, take a few minutes, look at it, go over that and, uh, you know, if we need to have some different, uh, discussion with them, we can. There's a timeline in there, it says when that's gonna go to the state, when there's gonna be some, some funding available and and look at all that. So it's not a rush, rush thing, so you, Craig will be here in April, you know, have questions, let's discuss it and see what we can do. If we, uh, wanna move on then.
How many filters are we using right now?
Uh, we have six and I think one is definitely offline, so.
Five out of the six are working? There's a leak in one of them, was that?
Yep, and a lot of problems with, with that, so.
And we had to, to get the water study in order to be eligible for-
Yep, uh, yep, you're gonna have to, they'll present that to, uh, the Department of Health and then what they call a WEWAC committee. That is a group of people that look at all the water, wastewater projects in the state and they'll make a determination of what's, what's good for Wakefield and, and make that as an option or an offer, say, "Here's some funding that we recommend for this project."
Okay, I guess any questions? Are we talking a significant percentage of this will be covered by something like that?
Well, we're hoping that we can get, uh, the last project we did with the water tower, we had loan forgiveness. I don't remember, I don't know, were you involved in that? No, I think that was Kathy. We had a certain percentage, it might have been twenty percent, uh, of what you just wrote off as loan forgiveness and then the rest we, we assumed that, uh, the debt from that, so. It, it, it's all a possibility, what, what they look at and what funds are available, uh, for them to to make some proposals to.
Gee whiz, I had no idea you'd do that much. Were you thinking two, two and a half?
I was thinking, uh, three to four and then, yeah, so, uh, it's, it's a healthy number. We're not there yet, again, it is, uh, yet to be determined by a, a bid for the project too, so. We've been, we've been underbidding all these street projects, so we're gonna hope that this, this project goes underbid too. What were you gonna say, Paul?
You, you can get you can get a community development block grant for water and wastewater or just-
It also outlines that on some of those pages I gave you, that, uh, there's, there's funding sources and there are probably a half dozen.
And that, that community development block grant is like at four hundred and fifty thousand you get? Is that what I'm thinking?
Something of that nature.
Yeah. Okay.
That would be a grant, so that's not paid back.
Right, then you can get low interest loans, we're supposed to-
Yeah, you might be able to get a combination of, of funding mechanisms put together. I would tell you again, you're looking at your water rates, so, um, and, and there's some, you know, probably some figures and numbers in there about that.
Do you think you'll have suggestions for that?
Pardon me?
Do you think, will you have suggestions for?
Yes. I will stand here and almost say a hundred percent, you will make an adjustment on water rates. Or you won't get the funding, that'll, that's the way it's gonna work. Now, there's ways to work around that, okay? So, we'll, we'll, uh, see what we can do there. We handled the Dollar General stuff. The other thing was just, uh, an update on the levy. I talked to a, a project manager just before five o'clock, uh, this evening. They have one item to have, uh, in place before they go out for bids. And, uh, that's, uh, the permit for the apartment roads. So I will be working on that until we get that a consultation. It should be a very simple thing to do, but it seems like it's pretty complicated for one reason or another.
We're still waiting for the deed from Michael Foo. Sent up.
It was sent to them.
Yeah, that's what I mean, it was sent to them, we haven't heard it in back.
Okay, they're good with it.
They are, okay, they haven't sent it back to be-
Okay, and the signed document.
Right.
Sure, well, I'll see what I can do for that.
They're probably looking at summer before that project gets going.
They said that they were gonna accelerate this bid time and, you know, there's gonna be a short window on it, so. If they got to it in the middle of March, maybe by the middle of April, they could release a bid. Not for sure. Hopefully. And get the same done before summer actually hits. It's not a big project, it's you would think it's gonna take years and years to get done by the documents we have, but. Alright, anything else?
Thanks, Jim. Before the reports, I just, well, we can read the reports, let's do the police review first, why don't you do that, Lee?
No, uh, streetlights were reported out. We had a discussion a little bit about, uh, Mike Pressler's property and, and, um, maybe the possibility of city acquiring that. Cause Mike's at the nursing home and he may not be able to return. Sort of wanted to look into that, but the property needs to be cleaned up anyway, regardless of that, so. We're working on that. The, uh, police looked at, uh, they issued one barking dog citation. For a particular dog that's been a problem for quite a while, so. See what they're gonna do about that. Donovan's been working on tagging cars and he did, uh, several of them this month and has had good luck. I think he's down to about seven and haven't responded. We talked a little bit about U-turns on Main Street, which has kind of been an ongoing issue for a long time. We're gonna see about kind of putting the signs, making sure the signs are up, replacing those that are worn and, uh, and enforcing that if we can, so. Then we talked, had a little bit of discussion about, cleanup day is coming April twenty-fifth and then we had a little discussion about preparing for the coronavirus, if somebody comes down with it in the community here. What, we need to start planning for what our response is gonna be. And then we talked about therapy chickens.
At the mayor's meeting, they all, we all, well, one guy had about a half an hour. Uh, there was a lot of discussion about, a lady had eleven therapy chickens in town. And she had set up, gotten on the internet, she found a license for a therapy chicken and they couldn't touch the chickens and whatever and it was a long discussion, but when they asked each mayor what some of the things that were, that were going on, we just had to introduce ourselves and I just simply said we had six million therapy chickens in Wakefield. I don't know if that's exaggeration or not, but there's quite a few. We had, we had a good meeting. The next one is the CRA, you guys got Gerald, anything other than what we talked about tonight?
No, I, I mentioned we had the retreat, I don't know, Val, have you, you maybe recorded a little bit on that? I thought it was a a good informational meeting. Person that's worked with CRA for a lot of years in Grand Island and, and he talked about just kind of the common sense type things and, and and of course he talked about staying out of trouble.
So you guys feel like you're doing, you're doing things okay then?
Oh, I, I think we're fine. I, and of course, everything we do, just about, we ask for an opinion from Klein Williams, so.
Good. Plenary commission, uh, they met and did they have the minutes of the deal? The park board, we talked about that long enough tonight, I think. Library board, one of the things, if it's on their report, but they're working on trying to replace the pillar. There's two pillars in front of the library, one kind of a half pillar that's right next to the building and there's one out in the open that you go with. You go past every time you go to the library, but they've had the waters gotten in there somehow and it's peeled and but they say it's non-weight bearing, but there's like a four-inch pipe in there that, if you reach in. But anyway, Audi Construction has stopped and looked at it and they're gonna give them a bid and they're gonna get a bid from somebody else. Oh, I'm gonna try to contact Foo's Construction in Hooper and see if they'll stand behind their building, because it's such a beautiful building, I would think that they would wanna replace that thing. It started showing signs of that in the tenth year, I believe, which maybe they won't do anything for us, but at least ask them. And they're pretty active at the library, they're new computers, they got a neat setup there with, uh, computers, the new table is really nice and they're getting a lot of use, so that's the library board. Civic Center Board. Minutes turning their bell?
Yep, yes they are and we are in the process of looking for a manager.
Fire department? No one's here from the fire department? Assistance Advisory Committee.
They meet April seventh.
April seventh. Cemetery Board. Hatchery Board, Rehab Board. And Tree Board. We ordered a tree for Arbor Day, they're gonna have their Arbor Day program at school, they're gonna plant a tree.
One of the trees coming to the city.
Uh, they said they probably dig it up in two weeks.
How many will we get to?
Um, right now we have order twenty-six, will be a few more.
Nikki writes good grants for that, appreciate that, Nikki. Uh, Zach, do you have anything to say about the, the Midwinter Conference of the League?
It's a good time, it's informative, it stinks us during the week, for the people that are working. But if you guys could come sometime, I would always recommend it.
It's really beneficial, you can learn quite a bit.
A wide array of topics.
And, and they change topics every year, you have different topics.
It'd be, yeah, it'd be a lot different for after selection year.
I was just gonna go over a couple of things. There are mayors, they had a mayor's meeting where all the small-town mayors, I don't know what it is, it's up to, Aurora was there, so it's a pretty big, good-sized town, but John Leeder's the mayor of Pomp and he's talked about getting three or four mayors in the area together, maybe working together on a project, which he's got a neat deal there with the state park that they could offer that and, and- He's got a neat deal there with the state park that they could offer that and and if we could combine that with something in Wakefield, one of our events. It'd be pretty neat because I know that our grandson came and they went to Ponka State Park with a friend. And that kid had never been to the park and he he went back the next month because he just loved it there. And I think it would be good for Ponka and it could be good for us if we would work on something like that, but we're gonna try to do that. Um, but John Leader's a good guy to to work with, I think. Uh, here's a, we talked about golf course, community owned golf course. There was a town that bought their golf course and a year later they were in debt one and a half million dollars, so. Uh, that wasn't really a a, a good deal. Loop City's working on a community garden. Uh, Ashland ha- is have, they have more, people want to live in Ashland now than they have homes because it's Omaha population is reaching out that way. I learned about a ready to serve order, that if you have electrical and water uh and a house that's vacant. He said a good way to get them to get, to move that house is to hook them up to city water and city electric because they have to pay the minimum bill. Even if no one lives in it. And we've got some homes that are sitting there with the utilities are right there, right, Jim? But that, this mayor said it works really well for them and there is a law in the state of Nebraska that if you're ready to serve, they have to accept your service within a certain amount of time. Uh, state auditor's office moved over that whole thing. One of the kind of neat things was Nebraska Impact. When the state celebrated their one hundred and fiftieth anniversary, they had a three person committee to handle the celebration and everything around it, and one of them was the. Governor's wife Suzanne Shore. And they had a little bit of money left over at the end of the celebration, so they started uh what they call Nebraska Impact. But on that, they've got some really neat deals with volunteerism and uh, a lot of things that Wakefield, I think, could do because we have a good history of volunteerism. And they'll put your project up on a uh, their own uh board. They they help small, uh. Let's see, what is it? Create hu- uh high impact videos for startup businesses. They created a a video for Scratch Town Brewery in Ord, Nebraska that they showed us. And then they created a video for a lady that had a, they had a problem with uh wild cats in their town, which we've had before. And this lady started what she called the cat house. And it's amazing all the work that they were doing. And then when they got on Nebraska Impact, volunteers started coming and then she had, for the first time ever, she had plenty of volunteers. And they also pay for spading and neutering those cats and release them back where they were found, give them their shots. And that solves their wildcat problem. But it was also a neat uh way for them to get people involved in the community. I thought it was really a good presentation. Then we went to Olson's Luncheon and Ron Gustafson, the basketball player from Lions that was hurt in a farm accident in the fourth grade. Lost his arm and and his leg was hanging by a shred. And he played basketball for Lions for three years and then he was a starter in their basketball team. He could catch the ball. He's lost his right arm. So his, he was right handed. He could catch the ball with his hand and shoot it. He was pretty good. And the Kearney uh college coach saw him and recruited him as a walk-on, so he played uh college basketball at Kearney for a couple of years. But he's very inspirational and uh, thought it was a good program. The police, the police chiefs from Norfolk, Scotts Bluff and Northeast Community College uh instructor was, were there and they talked about keeping and retaining police officers. And they said a safe town is a town that people want to move into. If there's crime, they don't want to move into your little town, so it's really important to have. Good quality officers, which I think that we have. And on retention, they said the best way to retain your officers is to show them you appreciate them. And he said so many times, you know, people, they appreciate you, but they don't understand that. And so that was an interesting deal. Uh, when they needed a, to add staff in Scotts Bluff, they put a. One community their side that made a twenty thousand dollar video and they got no one that uh. Out of that twenty thousand dollar video, but the Scotts Bluff chief put a little placard in the back of their their police cars and they had all kinds of applicants that applied. But they said your police officers are your best recruiters for new police officers. And that's all that I got out of that meeting, but it was, uh, thanks for sending us. Now, we want to pay the claims, is that the next thing? You got anything else, Dennis? Need a motion to pay the claims?
Motion to pay the claims.
Second.
Second it? Okay, it's Val?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
And Ross? You want to adjourn the meeting? We're ready to go? Need a motion for adjournment?
Make a motion to adjourn.
All right, all in favor say aye. All right, thank you.